Oh, we're trying to zoom. Do all get Carlos involved? Cool.
Well, oh, good. Harry's here. Mr. Farmer, welcome. Seeing that we have a forum, I'll call the meeting to order and assume Adolf will be showing up in three minutes. It is less than three minutes. No. Morning. Nope, not Adolf.
Okay.
Do you have a forum? How many people on this board? Five, four, five.
Cool. Yeah. So we got.
So.
I see Adolf in the window. So.
Billy, you have my reviews. And I.
I just. No, no, no. I keep. But I'm now at that point where I'm kind of. Oh, yeah. And Lily's been the last.
And.
I'll get closer. Go on.
So anybody should be on for a second.
Right. There you go. That's a good one.
Actually, look.
That's a good one. Yeah. I didn't know. I haven't seen one last.
What's that?
Well, my very.
Harry.
Okay.
So I can. It's gonna track up.
Hugging. No, hugging.
What's up? What did it is? Did we need to, you know? Is that what you're saying? No, I was. You got a lot more room. No, I'm, I'm perfectly fine.
My answer is.
Oh.
I know.
With Pam. Oh, shoot. Oh, good.
Three. But to be. Yes. But. I think she was accepting. Well, she hung in there.
Yes.
So I.
So I'm probably on Wi-Fi.
Right about life.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm some. Log in.
Oh, we have.
May ten. It's not over yet. That's she's not. Just wanted to make sure.
Well, no, I'm happy we did it because I have it written down.
We'll look forward to you in English. We should have something like. It is boss. Are your. Your phone size. Can you find your computer?
It's big.
Big. Yeah. Well, it's because. Me neither. I'm telling you. I just have like.
All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the meeting to order again. And I'm really gonna try to get out of this meeting in an hour. I've, I've been negligent in my life's passion. Yeah. Of having meetings of less than an hour. And they have been going over an hour. So I would like to just apologize to the community as a whole. I'm gonna try a lot harder. All right. So we do have a forum and I do have little chair report. We need someone to be the secretary of the group to take the minutes. All right. And now I'm gonna, I'm gonna believe this. Why are we still taking minutes in a society where we record the meeting? All right. So I gotta say, at any other committee member reports? Oh, we, other than not the dog, not the, yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody got anything else they want to report on Adolf? Nothing? Good.
Look, Steve, one, yes, one quick thing. I think in the bylaws, it says that we can have assistance from staff. And sometimes Slack takes minutes, just saying.
Yeah, no, but I don't wanna believer staff anymore too.
I got it.
Staff's overwhelmed and they don't need to be. I, I literally flipped out some minutes to Haley. And she literally produced these beautiful minutes. And I was kind of embarrassed going, wow, how much time? She spent more time on it than I did. So.
All right. We'll leave it.
Anyway. Where is Joyce? Are your hands in the air?
Yeah.
And your thumbs up too? I was looking.
Thank you.
That's why you're not. Well, that we would, we could say that to the next person that becomes a member that never. Pre requisite if they gotta do the. Yeah. For today. I'll take that for today.
Maybe the new.
Yeah. That's what they have like a little thing with verbiage and words and stuff. They'd be perfect for it. All right. How about Ex officio reports? Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch Kitty?
Well, we've been, good morning.
Morning.
We've been super busy. I made a whole long list of things that we were doing and left it at the office. One of the things we've done is ice plant removal. We did the last ice plant removal for the year, March fifteenth, I believe. Twenty-four people came, including students from US, CSU Bakersfield. Came out and pulled ice plant. And since then, the volunteers have been piling a bigger and bigger pile at the south entrance to the bluff trail. So that's gonna be there for a little while, but that'll be the last time we pull ice plant for the year. The weeding has been going on, as you can imagine. Which was remarkably canceled this week because of rain. We've been doing lots of school programs on wildflowers, including maybe four homeschool programs, two programs with Leffingwell. One with Santa Rosa Creek Middle School. Public walks for the, with the docents on various subjects, including wildflowers. But we've also been doing lots of events. The birthday event, three days at the Cambria Nursery. One day at Creekside last weekend was the wildflower show, the return of the wildflower show, which we haven't been able to hold since 2019. And that was fantastic. About 600 people came to the show. Very impressive. I've been told that if you ask how many flowers were on display, you have to count them. So I didn't ask. But I think it was between around 500 different types of plants on display. Quite beautiful, amazing effort by the volunteers. If you didn't make it this year, then you should try to make it next year. We have more upcoming events this Saturday. I'm gonna give a talk for wildfire preparedness day. We're gonna have a volunteer party for our volunteers, volunteer appreciation party in the middle of May. We have several more docent walks coming up, trying to catch the end of the wildflowers here on the ranch. So some more wildflower talks for adults and for students. It's just been busy, busy. The construction documents are in for the bluff trail boardwalk. But I have not had a chance to review them yet. Because there's been so many events. So we're hoping to go out to bid on the boardwalk in May this month.
Cool. Thank you. Any questions for Kitty?
One. I noticed that we still have a lot of monarchs around. I thought the monarchs were kind of gonna go away. Or do they here?
The monarchs should be gone. There, I have seen them around too, but it's been cold. So the monarchs spend their winter here and then when it warms up, they go inland seeking milkweed. If people are planting here, milkweed here, it messes up their migration. So that might be destroying their, their natural pattern. So what, you know, don't, even though it feels like a nice thing to do for monarchs, planting milkweed within five miles of the coast is not nice. But it's also been cold. So maybe the milkweed inland hasn't come up yet. So they're waiting for the right temperature clues.
So that means that the nurseries around here carry, I thought, personally, they carry the milkweed itself.
Nurseries do carry milkweed. They shouldn't. They also carry invasive species. They shouldn't, you know? They're, they're, they're in the business of making money. They're not ecological organizations. So don't think that because they carry something, it's ecologically sound.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Great. That gets me into another question. Can you give us, I was just up in Big Sur looking at all the ice plant. Can you give us a little, a quick primer on why the ice plant is important to pull out?
Sure. Although Michael might jump in. He's a big advocate. Ice plant is from South Africa and is not native to this location. So it doesn't support the native species. They haven't evolved together. Some, some animals can eat their seeds or get nectar from them, but they don't have the same relationship. There are organisms like butterflies that need a particular, say buckwheat, in order to lay their eggs and their caterpillars grow. Those caterpillars are food for birds. Without those caterpillars, you don't have birds, you don't have butterflies. The other reason we want to produce, remove the ice plant is it's very heavy. It's full of water with those big juicy leaves and it has shallow roots. So people think that it's protecting the cliffs because they see it on the cliffs. But it may not be protecting the cliffs and maybe weighing the cliffs down. But it's certainly reducing biodiversity. And if people like it, they're welcome to take home. It's the only thing I encourage people to collect on the ranch. Take home as much ice plant as you can carry.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Kitty? All right. Awesome. Nice work. Thanks very for. That gets us into state Cambria and a report from Julie.
Always my pleasure. Lots going on in the state world. Want to get you up to speed. First on the agenda is, of course, the most pressing component, and that is the grant. That's our Ocal's grant. It appears we are on agenda with our CCSD Board of Directors on May eighteenth. State Cambria and the team has met to match. And so there is no question that we have the fiscal capacity to come to the table. It has already passed throes. Thank you very much. It has passed finance committee. So that is the final step. The grant application is due by June first. So to have the meeting on May eighteenth is, is very tight. We're already working on the application right now. It's in very good shape. It will be ready to go. So it's a matter of those directors taking a look at it and seeing it as being feasible and, and hitting send. It does get us across the finish line at 1.2 million dollars. Just kind of a fun little fact, the Pomo Skate Park opened last week. That was a 2.3 million dollar project that was funded by Prop 60. So I just want to kind of make a calling out to the community to understand that 1.2 million dollars is actually a very small infrastructure. And want to reinforce that the reason that number exists is because of county requirements, engineering permitting, doing everything on this infrastructure correctly. And of course, it, better of that is the safety of our children and all those using the park. So in addition to that, what are we doing to continue our fundraising efforts? Because we never take our foot off the gas. Thursday, we had some fundraising come in through PayPal. On Friday, we had a skate rally. You never know on a Friday, we're always out there with our buckets and with the kids and adults. And it was a $300 skate rally day. So. Go figure. And then I got a call over the weekend that a friend who had finished a plumbing job would not take the check for his plumbing services, but had the client write the check to skate Cambria for $200. So that's, that's, any of you out in the trade industry who can hear this, please do consider donating. So that's $500 that will go in on Monday of next week potentially. And every dollar counts. It all adds up for deeply grateful. On the other side of fundraising, it's more of event presence and education to the projects. We have Monster Skate going on right now, which is the largest skate series for our area. They go to each park. Last week was More Bay and we had one of our representatives compete in that competition. BB took third place. We're super proud of her. And of course, this weekend will be Los Osos. We will be there in a booth location. And the big skate day is the following Saturday, which will be out at Slow Skate Park. We'll all be there in a booth location. It's a very large day. It's all wheels for all Slow County. It goes on all day long, a lot of competition, fun, food, music. And, and we're excited to be invited and be there because it just raises more awareness to Cambria and the part coming to the entire circuit. So let's see, that's fundraising. That's what's coming up. Please mark your calendar for May eighteenth because like I said, it does look like we'll be in front of our board of directors on the grant. It is critical. And do go to skatecambria.com. Because right now we're working on updating our story. The kids that started on our board of directors and continue to support the project are now graduating from high school. One of them is now in his junior year of college. So it's important to remember the endurance that we're asking of our kids to have a responsible voice. And they've gone the distance on this infrastructure. So we thought would be fun is when you go on the website and click on their face. You see the picture of where they were when we started this project and the new picture of what they look like today. Because a lot changes, obviously, with a teenager between their freshman and senior year of high school. They're all young adults now. So we're super proud of their involvement and we thank them and we congratulate them as they move on to their next stage of life. That gets you up to speed on skate Cambria.
Awesome. Thank you, Julie. Any questions for Julie?
One is, has this been approved by the county plan? Now, has the current plan been approved by county?
The current plan is sitting with the county on permit. We've got one assessment that is left, that is being looked at, which is your setbacks. And that's being reviewed right now. So to answer the question, when you say final, final would put us out the RFD. I know that Ray, who is working with county directly, knows that that permit is moving in the right direction. So we're giving them everything they want as quick as they can take it. I know elevation has also been ordered. The architect working on elevation reports. So I hope that answers the question. Any other questions? Anybody out there?
Maybe Keith whatever.
That appears to be the date that it will go to the board of resources, CCSD for approval on submitting the grant application. And again, it has passed finance. So. That's already made its way to finance. Anybody out in the public?
No.
Any questions?
Well, not online.
Not online?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Julie.
And thank you for the continued support.
No, welcome. All right. Now we're at public comment. Anybody in the.
We have some written comments.
Written comments. One written comment, although I'm for, okay, this is from Linda Pranentis. Although I'm for children's activity, if the, the agenda item regarding skate park is enlargement, I am against it due to the additional bathroom requirements and water usage until at least 100 building permits are issued. So we'll offer that into the records.
Can I, can I answer that?
No. You're not supposed to comment on public. Yeah. There you go. Thank you very much. All right. That, anybody in the, out in the general public want to comment? No? We're good there? Perfect. All right. That takes us into facilities and resources manager. Carlos is not here.
He's online.
He's always he online? Or is he in the other room?
Yeah. A statement. This is not the order of the agenda.
Public comment, facilities and managers.
I think, I think the presentation for the disc golf.
Or I skipped the presentation. My bad. All right. Let's go back to the presentation then. Perfect. Kermit, is that you, Julie?
Oh, Julie.
All right. There I go. Get to hear me again.
I'll kind of break it up.
I know. I know. All right. Well, we've got a lot to share and we really want to make this an opportunity to bring concrete information to the table today. It is somewhat though, I love the way you run your meetings, Steve, that is a little bit loose in the sense of questions and answers. And so, you know, we were tasked with putting together an ad hoc committee to, of course, go out to the public and ask what it is that they're looking for. We have spent the last several months with this ad hoc committee doing meetings at the Cambria Chamber of Commerce, as well as farmers markets that we've been diligently out on Fridays, collecting and garnishing. When we use the word petition, just simply going over the recommendations we were considering. We've also got an open email that we've been receiving public comments from. I read every single one of them at the meetings at the chamber office. We encourage the community to be part of those meetings. We have one coming up this Saturday at nine AM. This Saturday, every chamber of commerce, nine AM. We encourage comments. We encourage your thoughts. We encourage you to be there. So I'm gonna start with that. And then I'm gonna say thank you very much for a private donation in regards to hiring a very qualified professional to come down. His name is Leonard and he is with a company called Whirlwind. And Whirlwind Disco came out, did a site assessment on April 25th and walked the ranch with several of us. And I want to say there was like five or six. That's right. And what we have in front of us is his completed site assessment and site overview and recommendations. I even have several questions in regards to this. But I think what it does is it gives us a really tangible document to understand not just frisbee golf, but what is really being shown as what can be used and what we're defining as a community park or regional community park under the EIR that was established, you know, 20 years ago. Don't quote me on the exact date 20 years ago. But, you know, we've been working off of essentially that EIR, talking about pass-through activities, recreational activities. So the three that were presented were a nine-hole frisbee golf course, potentially nine-hole could be 18 if, if the site assessment could warrant that. An exercise circuit or potentially some additional trails. Not in any one order, although we do have funding on the table that is available for the frisbee golf. And that's why we're looking at that first. So our goal today, I think, is just to kind of talk this through. I think some really great questions are gonna come out of it. It's really good information for the public to clearly understand. And like I said, I've even got, I've got some questions on this. I'm confident there are people in the public and even on the board of our own directors with CCSD, going to be bold enough to say this, that had no idea what acreage was actually being distinguished for usage beyond just open space or what we're calling pass-through activities. And what does that even mean? In other words, what is qualified as a pass-through activity? What type of recreation is that? I, I can't answer that. And I think Kermit and I have some ideas on as way to get those answers. Anyways, there we are. Kermit, I'm gonna hand it over to you from there. That gets you up to speed. Other than the numbers aren't off the chart. These are very doable numbers. Again, we have funding for the frisbee golf. I, I think our disappointment, not in Leonard's work, again, this is in our board packet. It's available to public. Is the space that would be used is 13 acres. And it really limits the type of activity and bringing it to its maximum enjoyment. He's done a really wonderful job in here, putting kind of a hot map together that shows what are the best areas of a piece of property to use because of frisbee golf and daylight obstacles, which means adding trees. And I know everybody, I don't, we very rarely hear anybody complain about adding trees. But the disappointment is the area that has been allocated or told is what we are able to use in this regional community park is the worst case situation for frisbee rotation. Because there is nothing but flatlands. And you can see it right on the hot map. So, so I'm gonna turn it over to Kermit from there. And then I'm, I've got some of my own questions as a result of this assessment. Because we want to do, we want to do the work. We want to get this project in front of the board. And we want to make sure that as it's getting in front of the board, not only do we have funding, we understand the site assessment, but more importantly, we understand the most successful way to present the project to the board and to the public. I feel like this is kind of the worst case scenario. This can be done. The question is, do we want to do a nine-hole frisbee golf course? That isn't awesome. That isn't exciting and fun where people do it and go, oh, my gosh, you want to go to Cambria? Because they've got the, the really cool frisbee golf course. Not, oh, yeah, I went to Cambria. They have frisbee golf course. It was fine. It was adequate. That's kind of what I'm feeling on this report. But that's just my opinion. So that gives you. I'll do a bit more. What do you want to add?
I think the biggest thing is the, I'm gonna have Mark read to the base parts plan. He resolved, he resolved or did an excellent analysis. He will have a copy of it already. Essentially, he breaks down what's good for this potential video, right? Video acceleration to give it. We have sort of a subpar, yeah, there's breaks, so very cool, good, so-so, subpar or dubious, no way. And he comes up, breaks out the acres like that. But let me point out also that through that, the principal, this ball area because of the changes in the plan of 2014. Then you're the 48 acres was reduced to about 13 acres buildable due to complaints. So essentially, we have neighbors on top, you know, that say no way nearby house that they did agree. They redesigned the whole park. They, they moved things around. I, I frankly don't think we have enough space in that park to do half the things we thought we would, which is even the picnic area, which is relegated to a lower swamp. Basically, linked as wetlands and the previous land. So we, and now the just all produced about 13 acres of land, which should be considered. That's up to 48. The rest of it is sort of, don't go beyond this line of 40 acres about approximately to the west. You see that on the map. And the other areas that are a good potential, reasonable potential are wrapped with a hundred-foot do not show in this land area on the south, which is the area, south of the park, not in, in the east of the, of the dog park. So you have the wetlands that you can intrude on, the swamp, you know, most of the earth, half part of the earth. And then you have very small fragment of trees towards the elevation changes suddenly it goes uphill. And then you have the 40 acres of do not go anywhere and do not put signs and so forth down there to that's development. So essentially, if somebody gave up, probably two thirds of the community park to non-development, which is non-development is defined in the fiscal branch, that it's walking activity. And no development's any time, although that's true. Benches on the accessible ranch and that's a development, just as good a thing. But we have, we have basically been redesigned to say that we cannot over, we cannot develop much out of the existing footprint, which is the soccer field, two soccer fields, baseball. Don't put in bleachers and put in the, the, move the facilities unit to about three acres of parkland up there, right next north of the golf course. That becomes occupied by parks infrastructure now. So we are, we're losing area and looseness. Everything's gonna be constructed 13 acres. So that's not bad if you didn't reserve half that for open space games. Of, you know, go there. So frankly, in the existing parkland, we almost do not do any kind of anything but a very subpar golf course layout. And with that, that's, in fact, that's my, my major route to, to, you know, this ever look at it. It becomes something we can do. We can put four or five of these golf posts out there and they can shoot around the plains a little bit. And that's pretty much what the future looks like. So Mark, would you, you've read it and you were, you're the major knowledge, pool of knowledge in this thing now. Would you agree with that sort of setting?
I was initially surprised with the, some of the subpar and the so-so ratings. But as I thought about it more, I'm thinking that the, if we, if we're able to get a small course in, even if it's not going to necessarily attract people that are destination disc golfers. If it's a beginning to, to a lower intermediate kind of challenging course, I still think there's a lot of potential for community use. To me, that means, you know, that, that kids and their families could come out, even if they're visiting Cambria. It's not going to be as intimidating because it's, that's a simpler layout. So. I, I still think there's some potential, maybe even for a nine-hole loop. If we look at option B. If we look at option B that Leonard did suggested. And again, if we did, if we did, made some nice tee boxes. I think it could be a very attractive, well maintained course. It would just be probably not for championship disco tournaments.
Yeah, I think we were both really surprised. We went out to walk around and talk with Leonard because we walk East Wesleyan daily and it's a huge area. And so it was really surprising to find out that, oh, all that can actually be used was this like little strip along the edge kind of thing. That was really confusing. I do appreciate it. First, when we read the report, we were kind of shocked and just thought, we can't do this. Why do we even have him come down? But I did appreciate that he said that there were ways to mitigate it. And as Julie mentioned, adding some trees, adding some obstacles. It's an interesting thought because of how the area is looking at fiscal, Westfuseli. How you could add some things that might be done by local artists to add some interest, but also make it challenging for someone to go, oh, crap, I had to go around that interesting statue, you know, to try to get wherever I'm going. So I do think it's got some potential, but I, I was really surprised that there's so little land available for anything.
Yeah, well, I think having a sculptor isn't going to happen. If that's a development, then the sculptor is not going to agree exactly to.
Could be something like the elaborate benches, you know, it'd be something that's made out of natural things, more things that are that it shows them the history of that space. You know, you can have some things that really give you an idea of the history and think about areas where you walk through, where you see little signs that say, hey, this is originally dairy land, but this is this, this is the original. And there's a big cement thing over past the berm, you know, that's interesting.
But you raise conflict and making something like that as opposed to a natural area. Your, your whole thing is a lot cheaper. I frankly think that we probably, that's not, that's one for one approach. I wouldn't bother to put too much in there because I think it's easy change. We talked about the season change, but Frank said, I think the proposed mission needs to revise that plan, two thousand fourteen plan. And if we look at the basis, and Kitty, you were the one that usually be good. We have car, she was in there, you know, but you're close to have the history, right? So wow, two fourteen involved.
Oh, the community park plan? Yeah, there was a consultant hired who did extensive public meetings and got input from Cameron's. I think they paid quite a bit of money for all that public input. And the plan was made, but I think the key thing is I'm really happy you're paying attention to the A I R now because to redo an E I R would be like a quarter of a million dollars for you to make those changes to get a frisbee golf course.
They never revised.
No, it has not been revised.
And we could go back to the plant.
That's what you have, the current constraints.
This is revision of two fourteen. What I'm saying is go back to the two thousand nine plan.
I don't think the community park is detailed in the E I R. It just says this area will be set aside for a community park.
This is where I want, I think I want to make a suggestion when I first started talking and I didn't interrupt you, Kitty. And I said, I have questions. I I really think it's critical that whether myself, Kermit, Steve, Kermit, whatever the combination is. We need to get with the county and I, we need to get these documents and if it means meeting with Gibson's office.
All the documents are on the C C S D website.
Well, no, we have that, Kitty. I'm talking about how you define pass through activities. In other words, what does that mean? What recreation is a pass through activity? Is it just walking? Is it walking a dog? Is it, because to me, frisbee golf is a walkthrough activity. And so to limit us to thirteen acres when we've got forty eight acres, I I just want to understand what document tells us that? What tells us what pass through activities is to not allow us to warrant to use the other piece of land that's been designated as community, regional community park land. Not anything outside. I'm talking about what is in the E I R. Does that make sense?
Uh, no, not really to me. No, I'm sorry. I lost the point. You, you want a definition of pass through activity?
Yes.
Okay, then, yeah, that would be the county's definition.
The fiscal plan that states that I can read it. I've got it here.
The definition wasn't our definition. It would have been the definition from the county.
Why we're using a fiscal any branch plan on the community. You know, that tight definition on forty acres set aside for public community park is to be not valid.
Kermit, you said that that is development. If it's portable, that is development?
But you usually would go with.
Yeah, let's say you don't put it in. Let's say, let's, let's say you leave it just like that, just like that, portable. Would that be development? I think, yeah, and I bet you to the county. So we should talk to the county and figure if that's not, whether that's development. That's the issue. And we've made the request before and it's, and the county is can make that determination.
Would you suggest then, or are you suggesting that pros makes or a county have them kind of meet with us and go over the issue?
Sure. Yes. I'm on the ad hoc.
How would we do this typically? At Carlos, the staff representative of the county. Well, I won't break through that one.
I think we can meet with the county anytime we want. But we go there, they don't, we're not going to have them come here. We just go there and ask. There's somebody that's in charge of this particular issue. It used to be McMaster's. I don't know who's taken over his position. But he would go and he would look at the documents and make it including the E I R and, and make a determination.
If I think it's that simple to like, it was simply, here's the E I R, which I respect the document, Kitty, please say that. And here's what we've come up with. Help us understand how this relates. In other words, explain to us moving forward, what can be done beyond this thirteen acres? And is it only the thirteen acres? And if it is, what do you expect to see on the thirteen acres? In other words, we've talked about when I say P, I mean the community at large about all these grand ideas over the last twenty years that have gone nowhere. And we have a three hundred and sixty some odd thousand dollar bathroom coming to essentially support a dog park and some picnic tables. And so I'm just simply pressing on what is the best service to our community with this piece of land and what is actually usable? And to think that thirteen acres is going to sustain, won't even go there, but a six thousand square foot skate park. Never happened. A baseball field, soccer fields, a playground. I just want to give our community real expectation of what can be done and not just talked about. So I feel like the value of this assessment has been to really give us a visual understanding. We may only have thirteen acres. And if that's the case, Kitty, then then what, what can we do with those thirteen acres?
Well, I'm actually not that familiar with the community park plan because it, you know, it's not really part, part of it is enforcing the conservation easement, like the boundaries of it. But what happens in the community park is basically outside of the easement. So maybe Carlos can address, I believe the community park area is larger than thirteen acres.
I'm not sure what the thirteen acres.
I don't know what that is.
That's the development, that's the area before the
By the time you take all your easements or boundaries of limitation, that's what he came up with.
For the golf, just for the frisbee golf.
I think for the frisbee golf, you have thirteen acres. Other acreage aesthetic, playgrounds, sports fields.
Yeah, it's not a thirteen acre park.
To whatever else amenities are.
Well, so forgive me if this is an ignorant question. Why would frisbee golf then not be able to be out in those areas? In other words, this is a lot less impact. It's a lot less infrastructure than baseball fields, soccer fields, and you're saying those could go out to forty eight acres. Why could we not put frisbee golf out to those forty eight acres?
So I'm not sure if I understand your question, but all of the amenities for the park come already, it's all excessive. This question, provisions, they've gone to the E I R, which looks at every one of these amenities. Sports fields, picnic areas, and in look at everything for water use impacts to noise, to traffic. So all of these amenities have worked at stake. All of these amenities, all of those impacts have requirements once we start building that we need. And take away those, those impacts. So when we build the dog park, we will go to park lot. We will require to certain shapes, mitigations, those issues. Again, last time we discussed this, this topic about frisbee golf. I think we have decided that we're going to have presentation. We're going to talk about the design where the designer thought as there would be. From that point, then we would meet with the county and say, this is the area, this is the plan. Does it fit within the community park? Can we incorporate this part of the they have to take that to tribulation if frisbee golf is, can be part of the community. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
You did, and I'm, you're answering my question and what I'm suggesting. In other words, I think we're at that point, Carlos, where we've done our homework. We've brought it to the table. We're saying we want to, we want to really understand what the forty eight acres really mean. In other words, what is pass through activities? I understand the E I R is allocated for these things and said, okay, this can go there, this can go there. But something like frisbee golf or exercise circuit, they are a lot less impact than those type of infrastructures that have been allocated. So I, I think it would be.
They are, but I think the cabins.
To keep this meeting relatively on, on track, I move that the ad hoc committee meet with the, with the county at a date certain that we plan on within this month and bring the issue to the county. And I also think though, on as far as your report is, if it's only fourteen acres, if it's all flat, if it really sucks, I think we should do it anyway. We should make three holes, five holes, six holes, whatever it is. So that people can get familiar with it, neighbors know how much noise it creates, if any. And that so that it's one step toward the next twenty years, I think we should start.
I agree with you. I completely.
I'm with that too. Do I have a driving range?
Do we have a second?
Plant some trees too, so that in the future it's a better course.
Right, there you go.
I would like, I'd like to modify the county. But the aspect of doing the golf course with the existing thirteen acres might pose. We're going to have to also look at whether we can actually go that close to three, because I think there's setbacks.
Right, so we need to be.
Open it up and say, what about the whole plant? This whole thing, what, the picture ground over mosquito pit. See, we're, we've got the toilet right in the middle of the potential area that that was scarce because we don't have much. We've got a playground in there to go to. And the picnic area is best, the best planning land right next to the park area. We've got a block by the neighbors above on the hill. And the north, you're going to have a bathing site.
I, I modify my, I'll modify my, my motion that we go to the county with the constraint, with the existing plan as given to us for disco and bring up any other issues that may be pertinent toward the plan.
Uh, any more discussion on that particular point? Yes, I have one. Carlos, are you comfortable with that?
So one of my concerns, one of my questions that hasn't been answered yet is
Good point.
I haven't heard what the maintenance impact is for this frisbee golf. Who's going to know the acreage for this frisbee golf? What the cost is going to be for that? Who's going to be doing that work? What we've discussed is where the area is going to be, but the possible restrictions are assessed. The maintenance is something that has to be discussed.
Good point.
I can, I can comment on that. I absolutely agree, and I know we'll get there. It's difficult for us to know the maintenance when we don't know the location and how many holes it potentially could be. But that is absolutely one hundred percent a legitimate concern that needs to be answered, operation and maintenance. And Jim, thank you for the motion. I, I just, what I want to add in is it's, I'm not suggesting, in fact, I told Mark and Susan this. If this is all we can do, this is what we can do. Something is better than nothing. I'm just saying, I'm not willing to settle. This is me personally for just going, this is all that we can do without going to the county and understanding what is what we don't know.
Yeah, it's the canary in the coal mine right now to me. It's like, okay, we're, it's been twenty years in the making. What is it that we can actually do with this thing? Because I want to build a play structure that nobody's going to want, except for like a four year old. Like it's huge and big with slides and running water and swings, dangerous things. But where are we going to put that? Right? I'm just kidding, Harry. But a swing set, maybe somewhere, right? And where can you put a playground? Because I'm not real sure that has been in the plan. That's not something, do you remember it right, Jim? Yeah.
It's in there. It's in there, but it's also separate. So second grounds, mosquito bits and playgrounds up and enjoying the maintenance.
So anyway, good. I'm, I'm for, I'm happy that we're here. It's been a long time.
One question. So thirteen acres are to give us.
It's in the report.
Well, what I'm saying is that that is the land that's not designated for something else, etc.
There's a hint of.
Let's say that again.
What is the thirteen acres, the land that we have that's not been designated for a specific purpose?
Apparently so. Yes. When you, when you look at the assessment, it takes out the you're on your thing in the middle of the yellow part. Not that yellow, that's a purple. This section up here is still a camp. If he has removed the playground, the soccer fields.
Question is, is why can't, if we originally started that stuff, started designing and the park is not complete, everything's locked up. Why can't we just rearrange the property for those designated purposes?
That is exactly my point. I've just, you've done a much better job articulating it in a very short sentence. That is exactly what I'm trying to say. Nothing is there. There is nothing there. It hasn't been there for twenty years. Why or not, I, I just want the county to be able to say, listen, we're not telling, maybe that's what they're going to say. That E I R was done twenty years ago. You've done nothing. We want you to do something. So what are you thinking? How about that? Okay, great. I mean, we just don't know what we don't know.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Kermit, are you good with the motion in the second? All in favor, say aye. All right, all right. We're going to go try to find out.
We do have a public.
We have a, oh yeah, public comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure. I'm allowed to talk. Laura.
Laura.
When you unmute, you can talk. Crosby.
Okay, I'm here. Thank you. I am just getting used to this. Crosby usually does the manipulation of the buttons. So any, what I wanted to say, just very simply, to me on the park there, it's very, very important for Kitty and everybody to really recognize our conservation easement. That's number one. Number two thing is that when you're discussing all of this, please take into consideration what it's going to cost. I mean, sometimes this is not thought of. And we, the local residents are paying for this. I, I don't know if we necessarily want to attract the whole world to use it. Because it's the local people that are paying for it. So please put in something that's local. I know it's supposed to be a community park. But a lot of agencies donated to that, not just the county. So conservation and cost are two things. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
How do we get out of here?
I feel the same way.
You're stuck. You're stuck.
Okay, perfect. We're going to finalize that topic. We're all good. That now takes us, I believe we still don't have any public comment. into Carlos's facility and resources report.
So I'll keep mine short. Uh, we're still working on recovery from the storm March. Uh, we have been working big village on the Santa Rosa Creek Trail, which suffered months ago at that storm. Uh, so if you have gone on the fiscal new ranch uh, to the highway entrance on the Santa Rosa Creek Trail, you're going to notice that it's a spanking brand new trail there. It's looking fantastic. It's about half a mile of this we've done recently. Uh, and we also have a slipper that is keeping the public out of the area that is have been washed away by the creek. Uh, so go out there and enjoy it. Lots of birds out there right now. Uh, it's a beautiful area to go to. Uh, the trail isn't fully open yet, so there's still another half a mile of trail that is still needing work with trees, with erosion. Uh, and we were going to be working on that trail uh, tomorrow, but the rain has delayed us a little bit, so most likely we'll start on that next week. For us, this is the start of our busy season with weed abatement and fuel bricks. So that is what we're starting to focus on. Want to get ready? I received the uh, parcels uh, from the fire department that are on the weed abatement list. Last year, we had fifty six. This year, we have a hundred and twelve on it. So I am
Oh, boy.
Wow.
I'm looking to expect some of these lots. Uh, see what the issues are with the new lots. Uh, and try to come up with a plan of weed abatement of those new lots. And obviously there's, uh, it's going to be a heavy mowing year with all the rain and all the grass that has already grown. Already starting to get a lot of calls. The neighbors on the ranch concerned about the weeds and the grass and the fire issues. Uh, so we'll we'll start working on that. Uh, the other thing that I just wanted to uh, let the commissioner is uh, one of the items that was budgeted for this year for facilities and resources was to update our uh, C C S D own parcel maps. The maps that we had were back from two thousand eleven. Uh, since then, we've acquired significant amount of property. Uh, we were able to contract uh, with the law to to help us update our maps. I just received the first draft of those maps that have in a very large form where all of our lots are, are what we are, where all those properties are. Uh, so I'm reviewing that and hoping to have that finalized uh, here in the next month or so. Uh, that includes individual maps of the entire town, but it also includes a four by eight big old map that you can hang and then you can see everything uh, in large, uh, large scale. Uh, so anyways, that's sort of exciting to be able to get organized on those properties. So.
Did it come with a solution? They just.
It just says this is.
This is, this is the problem and it's a big map of your problem.
One of those lots.
And a highlighter.
Oh, good. Well, at least we know. We've been talking a long time about what it is and it'll be nice to at least see what it is.
Yeah, Carlos, you have to maintain the, you have to cut grass on the parcels. So the ones that are on the weed abatement list, yes, we have to, we have to uh, do just like everybody else in town. Do the weed abatement. Does your crew do it? So we used to do it some, and we used to hire out some, but now it's more it's financially better to hire those out. So we hire uh, the weed abatement list up, but there's coordination. Uh, there's plans that need to be coordinated with those contractors. Uh, because most of the the time, uh, we've done those lots in the past. They know what to do. They go out there and weed whack them. When you get new lots, there's a lot more fuel loads. There's trees that have to come down, plants, there's work that needs to be coordinated. Uh, so it'll be, it'll be an interesting challenge this. How many lots do you get added a year? We haven't had any uh, lots added in the past seven or eight years. Uh, so it was interesting. You know, it was interesting to receive three pages full of lots yesterday.
But are are those extra fifty lots that we have this year, those aren't lots that have come into our possession? Those are just lots that you are responsible for cleaning because people have been negligent in their taxes or whatever?
No, okay. So we've already owned lots. So the fire department goes around every year. They look at the community, they look at lots. They don't look and to see if it's a C C S D old lot. They just go out there and look to see, okay, that lot, you know, should be in the weed abitments and then we start to work. That's where our new numbers coming from is them doing an inspection of the town, realizing, you know, these extra lots that.
So Carlos, do you think the heavy rain has contributed to a increase in need for weed abatement?
Uh, absolutely. So as I reported to my board, uh, we we are at about a hundred and fifty trees since December. Not all of them are on the fiscal reach. We've got a lot of trees that are on our open space properties that need to be done with weed abated, cleared, cut. Uh, so it's definitely added a lot more work for this.
We have clusters of lots.
You'll see on the map.
Yeah, that's been the whole question, Adolf, the whole time is where are they? What can we even do with them? I'm like, if they're next door to your house, can the neighbor do it to just be a good guy or, you know?
So we do have clusters of properties of lots, uh, for example, that on uh, Philo Ramsey. Uh, we have a lot of lots that there's hardly anything that you could do with them. Uh, there's a lot of the basic plants, office grass, there's uh, French fruit. There's a lot of fuel loads, a lot of trees down, and it's very steep. So there's a lot of lots of, you know, they're, they're good for preserving. There's some value in that. Uh, there's very little you can do as far as recreation, uh, maybe a trail. Uh, but even then, it's hard to sustain a trail like that.
We're going to have to plant blackberries.
Oh, you don't have to plant them. Is there, is there any prospect of fire clearing out some of these tree sprouts? The downed trees chipping in?
Yeah, so uh, yes, there is a possibility of getting uh, cell submissible by the safe council.
Fire safe council is what I meant.
And and doing some of this this work. Uh, so we'll certainly reach out to them. Uh, it's a little hard to get a full crew to go out and deal with one tree here, one tree there, but we can definitely work a lot of trees in this area where it makes a lot more sense.
That would be helpful.
Very helpful. Good.
Any other questions for Carlos? Carlos, nice work.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your efforts. All right, that takes us into the consent agenda for approving my fabulous minutes from last month. I'm making a motion.
I moved that we approve your minutes.
Jim says they're awesome. Do I have a second? And Adolf seconds all in favor, say aye. Aye. Future agenda items. Okay, let's just stay on it. Regular stuff, right? And and we have them on, so we can put stuff on it. Carl, let me know what goes on.
Public comment.
Perfect. Go right ahead.
Another public comment.
Which hopefully will go smoother this time. Okay, Laura.
Hey, this gets a little easier. Okay, hey, this report is exactly where I'm coming from. I think the O in pros needs to be examined a little bit more. Okay, these lots that everybody seems to think is a hassle, these are open spaces that have been donated to us by the land conservancy. Okay? And the thing is to take care of them is part of our responsibility to keep Camry beautiful. You know, all the money that we spend on a lot of these other infrastructure that's extremely expensive. Money should be spent on keeping up these lots and possibly even uh, to some extent reforesting them so we don't have to have all this grass that just gets worse and worse. So again, this is something I'm very interested in on our own private property. I've been reforesting and I don't trim them because they're not necessary to be trimmed. So my opinion is let's put the O back in open space and resolve this and use monies to take care of our beautiful lots as well as build infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. And she has been very consistent with that message for the last ten years and I, and we have a hard time adhering to it, I believe, but I appreciate her bringing it uh, to our attention because I agree. So we need an answer to this. I won't even call it a problem because of Laura's, you know, but we need an answer to figure out how we're going to take them and make them safe and use, so.
Look at that clock.
Perfect, right on. Okay, that takes us to eleven o'clock. Anybody got anything else to say for the betterment of the community?
Laura, pass her hand up.
Laura, go ahead. No, she just hadn't figured out how to get a hand up.
No, she's got, Laura, did you want to talk again?
No, like I said, I just have trouble with computers. I'm sorry.
Right on. Okay, seeing that, I appreciate everybody's attendance. Thanks for coming. We'll be here next month.